All right, we will get started. Today is Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. It is 6:03 PM. We are at the Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, Maine. This is our Town Council meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, created in justice for all.
All right, we'll move ahead to roll call. Counselor Egan?
Here.
Counselor Pillsbury?
Present.
Counselor Lawrence?
Here.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
And Counselor Benoit is here and present. All right, our third order of business is to waive reading and accept as printed the April 1st, 2025, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion on the minutes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that's everybody. And then we'll move on to announcements. So we will be holding an informational meeting regarding the rebuilding of Flying Point Road between Upper Mass Landing and Pleasant Hill Road at 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 24th, at Town Hall Council Chambers. The second half of tax bills were mailed to residents on April 3rd. FY 2025 taxes are due May 15th. How do I say its last name?
Alphon.
Alphon. Steve Alphon, the Animal Control Officer, is working on the 2024 Dog Warrant. If you have not licensed your dog, you will be contacted by the ACO in the next few weeks to fur- for further enforcement. The CSX Thai Team Project will affect traffic in June. They estimate that this work will take place towards the end of June with the team working eight-hour intervals with six-hour breaks. The length of the closure will be one to four days. The work will require a total closure of the railroad crossings along the way as rail ties are replaced, temporarily halting rail traffic and closing all motor vehicle crossings along the route. Roads affected will be Webster Road, Hunter Road, West Street, Bow Street, East Street, Upper Mass Landing Road, Fernal Road, and a private road.
When is that?
So it looks like end of June.
And are all the crossings going to be stopped at one time? Or is it, it's as they get to them, right?
Yeah.
So when they've been working on this in the past, I think they try their best to limit, but sometimes it's one, and if they're very close to each other, two might be affected at the same time. But they try to allow people to still make their way through.
Well, as long as they do Hunter Road at midnight, I'm fine.
All right, commercial shellfish license renewal applications and fees are due in the clerk's office before the close of business on Wednesday, April 30th. Commercial renewal license applications not received by April 30th will result in the license being made available to the public by lottery in mid-June. 2025 recreational PEC licenses will be available to apply for starting Monday, June 2nd. The RSU 5 Annual Budget Meeting will be held May 14th, 2025, at the Durham Community School Gymnasium at 6:00 PM. The Board of Directors' proposed operating budget for FY 26, whoa, it's a big, is $44 million, 445,929, which is an overall increase of 6.83%. Attending and participating in this part of the budget process is critical to having your voices heard. Celebrate Earth Day at the Green Me Up event happening at Freeport Town Hall on Saturday, April 19th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Explore a hands-on watershed model, learn how to start plants from seeds, and learn about pet waste, and get a dog owner goodie bag. That's it for me. Any other announcements from council?
I have one. I've been asked to share with all of you that next Friday, April 25th, there'll be a screening of the film We Are the Warriors. It's going to be at Meeting House Harts, but it's actually hosted by The Land We Live On, which is a group of nearly a dozen community organizations here in Freeport that have been working for the last few years to better understand the Wabanaki history here in Freeport and our current relationship with Wabanaki people. We Are the Warriors is a documentary, actually, of the town of Wells and how they dealt with their high school mascot issue. And as many people know, there has been, I would say, quiet but increasing concern about the statue on Route 1 that is known as the Freeport Big Indian and what that says about Freeport and their relationship with Native Americans. So regardless of what your position is on that, or your ideas, or thoughts, I would encourage you to consider attending that screening and being a part of that community conversation that's going to follow, because I think that will be a continuing conversation in the months to come.
Could you repeat the time of day?
Yes, it's Friday, April 25th, and you, we are requesting that you sign up. So you can find that information on the Land We Live On website, which is landweliveon.org.
Counselor Egan?
I'm sorry, this is more of an announcement than information exchange, but the following day, on Saturday, April 26th, there is an open-mic poetry slam, poetry reading, at Freeport Community Center from 1:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon. It's free, there'll be snacks and soft drinks available, and some local poets will be reading. And encourage you, if you have anything that you even remotely think is poetry, please come and bring it and read it and share it. It's meant to be a community effort and to start, start some kind of profile about literary arts in our community and make it as easy as possible for people to participate. Open mic on Saturday, the 26th, at the Community Center from 1:00 to 2:30.
Great. Any other announcements? Okay, we will move on to information exchange. This is an opportunity for council to share updates from constituent conversations and committees and the like. So Counselor Smith and I held our third coffee with council conversation last week. We had, I think, six folks show up, which was exciting. A full table, just about. So things that came up were the stretch code, which we're discussing tonight. We also heard suggestions for how to make town more lively for residents. So there were suggestions for first nights and art walks and things that I think we agree and are in the downtown vision. Also, the Wood Bank, they came as well and said that they have a need for volunteers and for donations of wood or otherwise, and you can reach out to them. I believe their webs, I'm not sure what their email address is, but if you Google the Freeport Wood Bank, you should find it.
There's also a Wood Bank postcard on the bulletin board with their information on it, contact information.
Yep, and they're wonderful, and I support helping them as you can. Any other information from the council? Counselor Pilch?
The Special Projects Committee met and took on the charge that council delegated it with, and happy to announce that we're going to have a Freeport First Annual, hopefully annual, Freeport Community Day on Sunday, May 18th, at Memorial Park. Free hamburgers, hot dogs, veggie burgers, a time to learn a little bit about all the different plans we have, but mostly a time for the community to get together, make connections, talk to each other about what's going on in Freeport. The council should be around to serve food and a completely free Memorial Park, Sunday, May 18th, from 12:00 to 2:00, noon to 2:00. So look forward to that.
We're calling it Cook Out with Council.
Cook Out with Council.
Anything else?
Municipal Facilities Committee met this week, and we addressed, once again, the ongoing conversation related to developing a skate park here in Freeport. I shared with you all, after the previous Municipal Facilities Committee, that the request had come to us, of course, last year, related to Leon Gorman Park, and that site had to be abandoned because of conflicts with other stakeholders there. The updated request was to consider putting the, a permanent skate park where we've been doing the pop-up for the last several summers. And we had a number of concerns last month that we asked for more information about, particularly given the concerns of the New England Passenger Rail Authority about future development of our train station and the requirement for parking. There are quite a few concerns about putting a permanent installation at that site. However, we're also very aware that this group has been working for years to try to find a location to bring this gift to the people of Freeport. And rather than simply asking them to go away again and come back again with a new site, we'd like to really work with them. So one of the members of the Municipal Facilities Committee, Counselor Brown, is going to be our liaison, working on getting a better sense with the group of what their criteria are for a site, and hopefully working hand-in-hand with them to see if this is something we can do someplace in the downtown, which is what their goal has been. So I would expect there to be some further updates in the coming months to Municipal Facilities, and I'll bring those back once they're there. I will also say that we did have some participation at the meeting from neighbors of the pop-up skate park, who shared concerns that I think are, that I think are important to understand so that we know what is going to be needed in terms of ongoing management of a skate park when it becomes a permanent reality, and what, how we might address those concerns in a more proactive way.
Is the train station lot off the table?
It is, I think, it is at the time, for the time being, because of, and I will turn to Sophie for a little bit more detail on her conversation with NEPA, but their reading of our agreement in terms of what we are providing for parking, their interpretation is, I would say, less open to infringement than what, how we were potentially reading
Counselor Brown, count me in for assistance and help with anything you need to make this happen.
I also want to recognize that Counselor Pilch has been very involved recently, so if you would like to maintain that involvement.
Happy to be involved. The groups I've been involved with had a vested interest in that particular location, so if it moves elsewhere, they might not be as interested, but I'm happy to continue to make connections.
It was, it could be construed as a slightly challenging meeting, but I think we really learned quite a bit and a new direction, so I'm excited to find that perfect place that, we're not quite sure where it is, but I think it does exist, and working closely with the folks who hope to give us this gift of some, of some consequence is going to be good. It's going to make the difference, I think.
Yeah, I will say, I think this is the signal of sort of a new kind of collaborative effort in earnest, kind of echoing what you were saying of, instead of saying, "That won't work, go figure something out," this is going to be a bunch more collaborative, sort of pursuing this together with them, which feels good. So thank you.
A week ago on Tuesday, the, who was it that we met?
Oh, Bicycle Coalition, oh, Complete Streets.
Complete Streets, right. Met with Complete Streets and introduced Andrew Zaro. I'm not on the Complete Streets Committee, but invited myself and welcomed Andrew Zaro, who's the Executive Director of the Bike Coalition of Maine, to sort of sound out what they might do for us in terms of providing service. And I think we may see an opportunity for them to help us improve bicycling and safety for pedestrians, too, because if you've been reading the papers, it hasn't been good this year. A number of people have died. And I think they are specialists in this, and in fact, if you want to learn about some of the details of when things go wrong, the only place to go really is the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. The only people that are actually collecting data, so looking forward to seeing where this goes and keep you posted.
I also just want to share that we've received some really positive feedback for our video team, so I want to thank the whole team that helps bring together not only all of these meetings and gets them into homes across town and beyond, but also provides so much other great content on our cable channel. So just a shout out to that whole team for their continued great work.
Any other items for information share? And I will say, for one last piece, I just want to shout out Min and Jessica. She was just in here.
Yeah, she's sitting in the back.
Hi, Jessica. They both, and Brett, presented at the Finance Committee yesterday on our assessment process, teaching us about TIFs and keeping us up to date on the town spending. So thank you very much for your time and effort on that. And we are moving on now to the Public Managers' Report.
No, you forgot, Complete Streets.
I have Complete Streets. I told Barbara I was going to make sure I introduced her. So we actually have a update from Barbara from Complete Streets, so take it away.
Yes, Complete Streets, so yes, and Andy Spalding is here from Connect Freeport. And I'm here to report on a study that was done by Tool Design. It's the Freeport Multi-Use Trail Enhanced Project Scoping Study, and there should be a one-page summary for you. It was done for the town of Freeport with a grant from GP Cog. And the purpose of this study was to help us identify preferred trail alignment, off-road trail alignment, from the YMCA to all the way to downtown Freeport, but mostly from there to Pine Street. And this is an area that has, is hilly and has some water there and lots of private property, so it's been really difficult to chart a way through that. But it's really important to have an off-trail, off-road trail, we feel, for the experience that people will have. It will improve safety and will be a much more welcoming alternative to walking or biking. As some of the counselors know, we went on a tour walking on Route 1 during the summer. So the Tool Design did much work for us in helping us identify different areas, and we still have much work to do. Talked to property owners once we have a trail aligned, and Complete Streets approved this study with one modification. So down on the bottom, where it says "Implementation Strategy," it says, "Continue discussions with landowners to determine the willingness and compatibility of a trail on their parcel. The Freeport Planning Board should be aware of the potential for trail easements." This is where there's a slight modification that Complete Streets put in. "The Freeport Planning Board should be aware of the long-term plan and strong community desire for trail easements to be incorporated into development project site plans." So once we identify an off-road trail, then we need to get right of ways, and then we're on to funding. So it's a ways off, but I wanted to keep you in the loop as we go about this process. Thank you.
Any questions?
What's the next step now that the study's done? What do we do next?
Work on it some more, try to figure out, well, we have a way that we want it to go, so it is, it would be to figure out a way to talk to the landowners. And that's, that's the tricky thing. If anybody has any advice on that, we would gladly welcome it.
Be friendly.
Be friendly. We're trying to find people who have connections with the owners there. And so we've been doing a little bit of research and have identified some connections, so we're working on it.
Is there somebody from the Conservation Trust involved? Because they have those conversations a lot.
Yeah, Carrie Kinney has been working with us.
And just to note that this, you'll see this reflected in the capital plan. It's a few years out, but there is essentially a placeholder. I think as the plans develop more, we'll have a better idea about cost, but there's also, of course, the hope that at some point there'll be additional funding that's not just local funding. But there is, there is, it is part of the capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to the Managers' Report. We will have public comment period after the Managers' Report.
So I'm not going to read again about the April 19th Green Me Up and talk about the doggy bags, but I will just say, on April 19th, from 10:00 to 2:00, at Town Hall, we'll also, this education is part of the Think Blue Maine, which is our regional municipal storm, municipal separated storm sewer system MS4 permit requirement. So the more people that come, the better it is. So it's important. I also want to just give you an update to let you know that Caroline's been working with Earl and the library to prepare for the electric tool lending library, so we will be ready to roll that out. We expect that program to go live in May. We're adding a couple of boundaries on this program. First, we are using the state Minerva system so that we don't have to buy additional software for people to sign up and borrow the equipment. But we are saying that people have to be at least 18 years old to be able to borrow equipment, and they need an active library card to make a reservation. So the beautiful thing is, if you're a Freeport resident, it's free, and if you don't have one, you should. I also just want to give a shout out to our dispatch officers. So for folks who aren't aware, the town of Freeport has a very unique relationship with the town of Brunswick to provide shared dispatching services. We contract with what they already have. They are super important to supporting our public safety response and also looking after the safety of our people. So want to just acknowledge the hard work they do, and if they worked here, I'm sure we would give them some donuts or something yummy. Both of our chiefs took care of that for us and went to Brunswick earlier this week, so that's good. I am excited to announce that next week Lynn Olson will be joining us as our new community response provider. She and Glenn and Carrie kind of will make up a general assistance and case management approach to assisting people in need in Freeport, so I'm kind of excited about that. It took a while, but I think we have the right person in that position. Caroline and I held the first-ever manager drop-in hours last Tuesday, and I was shocked. We had four people show up, which was really cool, but it did highlight for us a need to look at the logistics, because we just kind of set up in the conference room and had people show up. And unlike council conversations where those are kind of in the chamber, it's not a big deal if you have multiple people sitting around and chatting, that some of the things that people might come to talk to us about really aren't about public policy. So we're kind of figuring out, how can we make it accessible and people enjoy it, but not have four people sitting around the table talking about engaging in the conversation? Just to remind people, if we want to keep this up, that Caroline and I will be available on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month from 4:00 to 5:00 at Town Hall. Also looking, if we look at next week, on the 22nd, it's a holiday, and all of our non-emergency response services will be closed. You can still access our online services.
I think it's the 21st, Sophie.
What did I say?
22nd.
Oh, I meant the 21st, but we could do the 22nd, too, if that. Just to give council a heads up, the Town Hall Beautification Project is going to the PRB tomorrow. Albert Pressgraves has done a great job kind of revisioning that with a limited budget, and of course, we're thankful to T-Mobile for their assistance so that we could get it done. Staff have been working really hard behind the scenes refining the FY 26 municipal operations and capital budgets. Council will receive your budget folder or file later this week. I'm going to just remind you that what you're getting is between what you used to get and the award-winning budget, so it's halfway, probably a little more than halfway. Jessica has really been working hard on it. I did like, last year, if council is in agreement, to do the submitting questions or requests for larger pieces of information by email. I think we put the 23rd as the due date, quite honestly, as long as we have it before the presentation on May 1st, I think we'll be in good, in good stead. So our planning partnership initiative with the Maine Department of Transportation hit a milestone this week. We received eight submissions for the engineering and planning technical support to help move that project along. I was really excited because I think they were incredibly high-quality projects overall. We pulled together a leadership team that included two counselors, two members of Complete Streets, and an assortment of staff people. Some of us just popped in at the last minute to help make the decision, not really. But they have selected finalists. We have opened the envelope, which is where the pricing is, and we have some questions about that pricing. So our goal is to finalize the scope of work to make sure that we're both talking about the same scope with the pricing, and that would come back to the Town Council for approval at the next council meeting. So it would be your May 6th meeting. Also, just to give you a heads up on spending, because I know you like it when I do that, Brett and Min and I have started the process of looking at the expiring Freeport TIF 2 and TIF 2B districts. We were really creative with those. But it's essentially the Village Station LL Bean Berenson, and they expire coming right up. So we need to be able to bring back to council and to FEDC recommendations for kind of how to move forward with that and support discussion, because I think there will be a significant discussion. This renewal is kind of complicated because we're at the statutory end of a general economic development TIF district, and the statute now allows us to roll it into a transit-oriented development district. Really hasn't been done, so we're paving a way. I was kind of hoping Felmath would get there first and we could follow behind, but I think, I think with Brett, we'll be more creative and really try to push what we'll be able to do in that district. So that requires legal assistance, and we reached out to both of our current law firms that we do business with and laid out a scope of work. Based on that scope, we are getting ready to sign a deal with Bernstein Sure, because it's less than the $25,000 cap that we have on purchasing. I think we just need to finalize the scope, and we'll be all set to go from there. Yes.
Do I understand what you just said, Sophie, that we're, we're going to make a move here?
Do I understand what you just said, Sophie, that we're going to make a move here with some legal advice to reprogram the authority we have under the TIF, but create, sort of aim this towards the transit-oriented development district and area that we've been talking about?
Yeah, so the way the statute worked up until about three years ago, once you hit the 30-year mark, you were done with the TIF district. It expired, you had a year to expend any funds you had, and then the legislature came back around to this idea, well, maybe if we limited what you could use the TIF for, it would make sense to be able to renew it.
Right.
And so this TIF can only be used for the types of things we're talking about with the transit-oriented development in the Dog Bone and the Planning Partnership Initiative, and also to support affordable housing, are the, under statute, the two things that it can be used for, some minor amounts for general economic development.
Is there any prohibition or encouragement either way for the specific geographic area and properties that were the benefit of that first TIF? Can they, can they apply to be included in the transit-oriented development, or are they excluded because, or is that entirely a subjective decision that the council?
No. In order to renew it and maintain the increment, so the money that we've been getting, they have to be part of it. So there is an element of the II, TIF II, that does not include, is not geographically tied to the transit-oriented development area, so that might need to be dropped off. That's one of the things we want to talk to the lawyer about.
Right. Okay. That's precisely what I was trying to get at, is what's the status of the properties that are in there today?
So Min and Brett have been working. They've got maps with all sorts of beautiful colors to denote potential parcels that could be in it, where the statutory line is for the TIF eligible projects, where the Dog Bone line is because it's further out than the statutory line. And ultimately, what we include, what we allow it to be used for, will be discussion for the Town Council to have. And if we look at the way Town Council has normally dealt with TIFs, FEDC would be part of that discussion in some form or fashion.
Question on the housing. You mentioned affordable housing. Is that the full scope of what's allowed, or?
Transit-oriented development and affordable housing. So that's what the statute says. Part of what Brett and I have been frustrated with is trying to get an answer on what that actually can be. So we see our job as to bring you back the widest array of potential uses, and then for you to either agree or start winnowing it down to what your policy goals would be. And to try to put as much reasonable development into it to make your goals prosper. Again, you get to decide the geographic area.
Are we proposing to extend the credit enhancement agreement? No.
In fact, I would say we could not.
Okay, that's a good answer.
As I read the statute, I don't think it's allowable. I think credit enhancement for affordable housing or future transit-oriented development would be allowed, but yeah, I don't think we can.
Is the amount we're spending on legal services greater than the amount we expect to see in tax shift by the extension?
So I haven't seen the full tax shift calculation. I will tell you the tax shift calculation in Freeport, I'm still trying to get my head around, because when you're up north, it's a much bigger shift. So I think that's something we need to kind of look at. From my perspective, it makes sense to evaluate. The tax shift will be a calculation that is done in the midpoint, so I'm not sure you'd spend all $20,000 before you could get to that number. And if it doesn't make sense, we bring that back to council for, before we start building out the rest.
Do we have a guess? Like, do we think it's going to be a bunch? If we get to that point, if we get to the point where we can take a stab and reasonably say that we'll save more than $30,000 by doing the TIF, otherwise, I'm not sure I would make sense to do.
Well, over 30 years, most definitely, just the shift.
$1,000 a year, yeah.
But I think it is worth looking into, because if we decide down the road that TIF makes sense, and we don't do this now as a renewal, we will lose all of the increment that we're currently sheltering. So I think it makes sense to look at it now. And then, I don't want to stop conversation. I love it when you guys actually have questions. It's great. Fireworks. I need to talk about fireworks. We really need to decide if we want to move forward finding a new location. So to put this in perspective, I don't know if I can do it as well as Counselor Smith did at the last meeting, but normally, the fireworks are coupled with a concert in the park or at LL Bean. This year, there is not going to be a concert in the park for the Fourth of July. It is further complicated that our partner, Pine Tree Academy, is not available to us on the Sabbath, which they're Friday night. So there is an option of trying to find a location, and Caroline was around here, and...
She's back there.
Oh, Caroline!
Sorry, I didn't mean to totally disposs your spot.
She's supposed to be camouflaged on the floor.
I think it's the shirt. It's exactly the same color.
You want to hear about fireworks?
I do.
Okay, so you summed it up good so far. So we've been talking with the street gang group, who you're all familiar with, about fireworks. We're back to where we were a couple of years ago, which is trying to find a new spot. We have looked at a lot of spots, we did some test things a couple of years ago when we looked into this. Somebody in the group did have an idea that there might be some options down on Depot Street. They did reach out to the Power Technics Company. They have some frustration because we keep bouncing around and having to find a new site, but there's been a lot going on. So there's a possibility that we could have a launch site from Depot Street. I think my opinion, based on my fireworks experience, would be a couple of challenges. One, there's a big grade change. I believe it's like at least 30 feet, and so where are you going to see them from? How big are they going to need to be? And where are you going to watch them? And secondly, the fireworks company, there needs to be buffers, and the buffers are dependent upon the size of the shells that we need to launch, so that you can actually see them from somewhere. And so if we are to pursue that, the size of the shell weighs into the cost, which weighs into how much everyone needs to contribute. It also could require that we need to close Depot Street for the event, which case, that's a town road, we would have to come to the council. Operationally, there is a lift for staff, we need to have public works, we're probably going to need barriers, we're going to need a safety plan, and we're probably going to need some level of police detail. So that would come into the cost and either have to be added into the amount that we need to fundraise from our community, or we would be looking at ourselves to cover that cost. So at this point, we really want some feedback to the desire, what you've heard from your constituents about wanting fireworks and how much we want to put into this for this year. The hope is that if we couldn't do it this year, and there's still strong enough desire from our business community and our residents that this is something they want, we would look to reserve the Power Technics Company for next year and go back to the traditional plan of launching from Pine Tree and try to work with the RSU and see if we could get viewing from the stadium. What are your thoughts?
Well, it's not a lot of good options. And it's, you know, April 15th, so this is going to go quickly.
We have done this in two weeks in the past.
Is the, in the past, we've had a business contribute a site and a concert, and also some money to the fireworks?
So my understanding is that LL Bean will have some events in the park this summer. It will be scaled back significantly due to what's going on. I don't believe they've released a schedule. They do want to know what we're going to do for fireworks, because if we are going to have fireworks, they will include it in their advertising, so people will know. But we need to know within the next two weeks, or we miss that.
They include it in their contributions as well, or just in their advertising?
If this is important to our community, they would still be willing to contribute, but given the variable factors, the costs could increase if we're looking at road closures and details and shell size and all that stuff. Sophie has some additional information?
Well, I'm just going to suggest that if they're going to contribute, one of the things that's wrapped into the concert is the fireworks. And so we have not been paying the detail for the public safety, which is a considerable amount of money. So we just want to understand that.
Yes, we can look at that again. Counselor Brown?
What did you say about Pine Tree Academy?
There's Sabbath, so it's not available for us to use. I think if we, they've been a great community partner, and if we can't do it there this year, we would look to do it there next year, I think.
Which is a Saturday.
Yep, so their Sabbath begins Friday at sundown, which is why we can't do them Friday. But my understanding from past conversations is that we could do them Saturday, because it would be after sundown. I will say, one of the things we're trying to be careful of is the company we use has been very patient with us as we canceled fireworks, relocated fireworks, relaunched fireworks, and we don't want to, you know, burn that bridge by looking at all these sites again and having them miss an opportunity, because it is a high-demand year for fireworks, and there's less people doing them. Counselor Egan?
No chance that our own public safety would be big enough for a launch site?
I don't know if they had looked at that in the past. We did do a sample run from the LL Bean Casco Street facility, but nobody in town could see them. I don't know, I don't know if it's separated enough from buildings at the public safety site. Not sure if they've looked at that. But again, when we, like, from the launch site, nothing comes in or out. Everything's out, and I don't know that that would be good operationally to have our fire rescue people not be able to access the building. And we don't know how the train weighs into the Depot Street public safety thing either. We haven't gone there.
I can see all kinds of comments and protestations about that kind of noise on Depot Street.
Yeah, I'll say in general, too, there's a lot of varying opinions on fireworks now. You know, from environmental noise, animals, there's a lot of opinions, which is why we're for you guys.
We get to make the fun choices. I'll stick my neck out and say that, given that the celebration this year in town will be more modest than in years past, I think it gives us an opening to say, maybe we take a break as a, I don't want to say a joint decision, because ultimately, it sounds like it's on our shoulders here, but, you know, given that there's not a concert and all the other things that would normally go with it, I think people would be pretty understanding and say, okay, no fireworks in Freeport this year. Let the arrows fly.
Any thoughts on that? I think that's, I agree, I think that's a fine approach.
I'll just reiterate, I think, the thoughts I shared last meeting, which is that if we're able to focus our attention on the morning, which is the road race and the parade, that is certainly a focus for the community celebration, to acknowledge that we are celebrating the Fourth of July. It's also the potential that if we do not have details in the evening, either for a concert or fireworks, that also saves us potentially a lot in terms of allowing public safety folks to be home and doing what they would like to do for the Fourth of July.
Any additional thoughts? Sure. What would you like?
Yeah, new hip, I can even run. I, as a member of the community, completely endorse what Counselors Pilch and Smith just said. I think we're okay without the fireworks this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Johnners. All right, I think, is that the guidance you were looking for?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Pilch, for saying the hard thing.
Register one haramph. I'm disappointed.
All right. Anything else from the manager? Any other questions for Sophie? All right. We will move on to our official public comment period, part one. So this is limited to comments that are on items not on the agenda, for folks in person only. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Whoever would like to speak can step up.
Hi, Andy Spalding, 59 South Street. Does it count if the agenda item where Barbara Guffin spoke about the study? Can I speak about that?
We will give you your three minutes, yes.
All right. I wasn't actually planning to speak, so who knows what will come out, but Dan's question to Barbara regarding the multi-use path from roughly the Y to Pine Street, where, Dan, you asked Barbara, how can we help, triggered me to be up at the podium right now. So I once was on the Active Living Committee for many, many years. Some of you may or may not remember that committee, which became what is now the Complete Streets Committee, so we live on. And over time, we came to understand a couple of things about this corridor, this roughly from the Y to Pine Street. One, for many, many years, the town has been waiving developers' requirement to build a pedestrian accommodation along Route 1, so we do not have what we might have had by now, which is a pedestrian accommodation along Route 1. Secondly, the East Coast Greenway, along with the Bike Coalition of Maine, have long stated that their goal from, as many of you know, from Callas to somewhere in Florida...
Key West.
Key West, thank you. Desire is to have a fully off-road multi-use path, and we think that's a great goal here in Freeport, too, because it has, it has a recreational tourism as well as utility for residents to get from here to there. So we've been in hot pursuit of this off-road route. The study, the study identified the best possible way to get from the Y to town. As Barbara said, very tricky with grade, with property owners. And I would like to share, I have met with many of these property owners, including the once-proposed Solar Farm, the Fogg family, Maine Beer Co., and Good Fire owners, as well as the Y regarding a potential easement. And most are pretty favorable, pretty open to it, but they're challenging conversations. So in my 28 seconds left, I would say, how I think you can help is by tasking Complete Streets. Like, don't just let the study sit. Ask them to do something. Pursue this route. There are a couple of property owners on the best possible route. If they say no, we will not give an easement. This will be a, it will be a pretty short, like, there won't be a really great alternative, like the New England Forestry Foundation for one. If they're not willing, it's not really a viable route, so please task them, work with them, manage them to play this out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. I'm Daniel Freund from 38 Chekhok Road. My printer wouldn't print, so this is, this is a challenge here. I requested that Kelly Wentworth... I requested that Kelly Wentworth, the business manager of RSU5, send the, send me information about the medical premiums that had been spent by the RSU for 2022, '23, and '24. I then sent that information to a qualified national competitor, and they came back with an estimation that providing the identical plans with the identical doctors and hospitals and providers would have a three-year savings of $2,411,974. I attended the RSU budget meeting at the school in Durham on April 9th and mentioned this to the committee there. They were lamenting the fact that they were going to not be able to hire eight people back because of budget cuts. And the cost of those eight people was approximately $800,000 a year, which is what would be saved if there was an alternative to the Anthem Medical. So I have a single request of the council, and that is that the RSU school budget be approved only if they are willing to request the data. It's the only request. Simply get the medical claims and compare them. And I think the data will speak for itself. It's interesting to me that when I asked Lindsay, the chairwoman of the RSU Budget Committee, she said she was unaware that this item had ever been studied in 15 years. Go back to Cape Elizabeth, which did do a study 15 years ago with a 45-person committee, and they found that both MEA and MMEHT were extremely, extremely expensive and that alternatives existed. So my request of the council is that you have the RSU5 obtain that data and let the data speak for itself. Thank you.
I just want to point out, I hear your recommendation or your request. The RSU has their own board and operates separately from the town, so I would continue to bring that request to the RSU5 Board.
But we, we have to improve their budget.
So the budget actually goes to referendum. The town votes on it as a whole. Anything else for a public comment today? All right, moving on to our new business. Item 43-25 is to consider action relative to adopting the April 15th, 2025 Consent Agenda. We'll switch it up today. Councilor Smith?
Be it ordered that the April 15th, 2025 Consent Agenda be adopted.
Second.
What we see is use of town property from L.L. Bean and to approve the appointment of Nicholas Adams as the Freeport Building Inspector. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, seven to zero. Okay, moving on to item 44-25. If we recall correctly from our last meeting, this is connected to item 45-25 in its relation to building code. So the first is a public hearing on basically some housekeeping of simplifying our building code to omit code references from Chapter 2, that cross-reference back to Chapter 11. So if I'm recalling correctly, this is just simplifying our building code, not having it in two places, cleaning it up. Okay. So we'll save most of our discussion on, on the following item for when we get to that item. So we will open the public hearing for item 44-25.
Sorry, is this about the building code?
So this is to, basically, it's a very confusing connection. So this one is to, basically, it's a housekeeping item. This one's to kind of clean up how there's dual references in Chapter 2 and Chapter 11 to simplify that. Yep. Okay. Is there anybody on that?
No, Nick is here if you need him.
Okay.
This is the subject.
Okay. All right, so we will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on this particular item up on the dais? Okay. Councilor Brown, will you please read the "Be it ordained"?
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 2 Administrative Code, Section 509.3, to omit specific code references and cross-reference back to Chapter 11, building code be approved. Second.
All right. Any other thoughts? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's seven, zero. Okay. So moving on to item 45-25. This is also a public hearing, so just a reminder that this was placed on the agenda with the current language mostly because that's how it was written, not necessarily to indicate a council opinion, but it's also kind of confusing in how it's, how the votes will impact what we decide. So majority vote yes, we'd be repealing the stretch code, and we are accepting the language as written in our packet. Majority vote no, we vote to not repeal the stretch code. That would then go back to Nick for a language update, and we would set another public hearing. So we had lots of discussion about this at our last meeting, so setting that expectation before we open the public hearing. All right.
Do you want Nick to give you?
Yeah, I think maybe actually having Nick give some background and context again would be helpful. So Nick, I'll give it to you before public hearing.
All right, good evening. At the last meeting, we discussed adopting the new, basically the building codes and ventilation and everything like that, that we're not changing and we were preempted from changing that. The one change could be is repealing the current stretch code that we have. And as we discussed it in the last meeting, the stretch code would be the 2021 with required rez check and com check and meeting 15% better. There is an exception for residential where you can go 10% if it's all electric. At the last meeting, the council asked for a couple clarifying questions. I did reach out to a developer who could not make the meeting tonight, but did provide some information of the three houses that they have going in Freeport currently. In order to meet the stretch code in those houses, they would require a full whole-house ERV system and windows, triple-pane windows, the way that they build, to a .06 to a .1 U factor, and I believe the cost was added to $10,000 to $15,000. Another question was asked about multifamily and what the cost would be. The only multifamily we have is, is main housing, is Barney Heights. They do have their own energy code requirements, which, when I reviewed them today, they basically look like the 2021 Energy Code, which would be what the state is going to, the entire state, if you didn't adopt the stretch code. So if we did adopt the stretch code, they would have to meet the stretch code requirements from what I can see, based on my knowledge of what they had posted online with their energy code requirements. And then another question was asked, what would the cost of, what I did, the rez checks to try to get to the 15% better on that 28 by 48 ranch? Well, I'm adding the foam on the exterior to an R10, adding an ERV, whole-house ERV, and adding the basement walls, you're looking at another $10,000 to $15,000 for that ranch, from what I can see, based on talking to lumberyards and contractors. So that was what was asked of me at the last meeting. There is one change in the 2021 that I didn't mention last time that's, that's state-adopted statewide. They took the prescriptive tables where you, you come in with your house plans and you just say, I'm going to put R50 in the ceiling or R20 in the walls or R10. The current 2021 says you can do an R20 or an R, with an R5 continuous foam on the outside. They amended that to make it R20, R10 on the outside. And if you don't meet the R10 by going through the rez check requirements, you have to meet a perm rating, which, either you got to get an engineer involved or a perm rating. So it is actually more strict, I believe, than we are currently with the current stretch code. If anybody has any questions?
Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing.
On behalf of the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, I'm here to encourage you to not repeal the code. Our group has discussed this, and we believe that this is the right time. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Is that better? Okay. And we believe that, given everything we've been talking about with the Climate Action Plan and how important it is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, this is the right time to actually show commitment to the climate plan that we just adopted. And it's not just a question of leadership, it's also an opportunity. I mean, we've been doing a lot of research and based on a study by the Department of Energy, the cost reduction, basically, that hinge on the energy savings, far outweigh the cost of building to the stretch code. So annually, you can expect to have in Maine, with the 2021 code, about $1,000 in savings on the utility bills, and the lifecycle savings is about $23,000. And this, based on the estimate of the Department of Energy, is actually a cost savings for the person who's building the house to the 2021 stretch code. I also wanted to mention that we are firmly in support of high-density housing, encouraging developers to come and build more housings that will have more people and revitalize the downtown. But we just don't believe that repealing the code is the way to attract people. We have an image that we want to protect. That image has value. It attracts people who want to build here. This community is very desirable, I think we all know that. And I don't think we need to lower the standard to have people come and help us achieve our goal of more economic activity in the downtown. So I would encourage you to please not repeal the code and keep forth. And keep in mind also that affordable housing would not be affected by this stretch code if they have their own. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak during the public hearing?
My name is Lance Splecher. I live on South Freeport Road, and we moved there temporarily for three years, 47 years I was involved with the building industry, presidential building industry, for about 35 years here. When we moved here, the standard was two-by-four, uninsulated, single-pane glass, and maybe some storm windows, if you could afford them. It was also during the energy crisis. The Arabs had embargoed the oil. The oil had shot up to 50 cents a gallon. People were shocked. And so the building community had to go through what it's gone through a couple of times and is going to go through at least a couple more times. They had to change what they were doing. They had to learn about insulation. Some of it was good, some of it was very bad. They had to learn about vapor barriers, which, without which, you can rot your house. They had, they had to learn how to tighten up their houses, and then how to deal with indoor air quality because indoor pollution was being kept in. All those things were tough, and in many cases, they were expensive. But if you lived in, if you live in a two-by-four, uninsulated house with single-pane windows today, you certainly can appreciate all the value of all those changes. I taught architecture at the University of Maine about 20 years ago, and at that point, I told my students, you're young, you're going to be practicing for a while, you need to learn how to do a building that does not use fossil fuels. They were shocked. The best architecture schools are teaching that today because that's the future. And I, I know the builders, I know it's tough to go through this process, but when you think about the two-by-four, uninsulated, you know we have to. Also, it's not the sort of, it's the sort of thing that is best accomplished when you build the buildings. Because we all know, I've got an old house, it's uninsulated, I want to make it warmer. That's very expensive. It is more expensive to do than it is to do it when you're building the house. Finally, I, I know no individual is going to stop climate change. We know what's happening. The Gulf of Maine is warming more than any other body of water in the world. The lobsters know what's happening. They're moving north. We also know about the, the other effects, and if we don't, we should ask the people of Paradise, California. So it's got, it's got to be halted, and one person can't halt it, one community can't halt it. But we need to do our part, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cara Podkamener. I live at 22 Greenwood Lane. And Lance, I loved all your comments. And if you've been in your house for 47 years, it turns out you didn't get to decide what was in there, and now you're just dealing with it and having to pay more. And I think that's a huge piece of it. And you were saying it's, it's cheaper and more efficient to, to put those, those energy conservation measures in upfront. And so I'll just note a few things, I think, in, in agreement with, with what was already said, this is really an opportunity for Freeport to be a leader. On, on the Maine Governor's Energy Office Building Energy Codes website, it talks about the three communities that are leading in Maine. It's South Portland, Portland, and Freeport. Of, you know, I think it's really amazing, it's the one small town that's showing how to do this in the future, and we can keep leaning in. Building, building energy codes are cost-effective. You save money over the lifetime of those measures. Agreed, it is more, more money upfront, but you're saving money on those energy bills. It means that your, your building is more comfortable if the power goes out. These things all matter. The technologies are moving forward. We want to really be on the, the, the leading edge in showing people how this is done. I think, like, I don't know your name, I'm sorry. Like, we, we can really, we have our, our, our Freeport vision. This is what we have said we wanted to do, and this is a way that the Town Council can really lead by example. We have the state climate goals. We can help be training the workforce of the future that's going to be implementing these around the state. And ultimately, it's a false choice between building affordable housing and meeting these climate goals, and the energy codes are the most cost-effective way to do that. So I would love it if Maine remains that, that example on our website to really show what's possible, so I encourage you to maintain the, the stretch codes. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Naomi Biel, the Executive Director of Passivhaus Maine. I live on South Freeport Road here in Freeport, and I just wanted to agree with everything that we've heard so far. I honestly don't have much to add to that, but I do want to underscore all of the community engagement that we have embarked on in these past few years with the visioning, with the comprehensive plan, with the climate action plan, and over and over and over, efficiency, building efficiency, and resilience was highlighted as a priority in all three of those studies. And additionally, the, just a year ago, when we adopted the first stretch code, that was a process that we, we went over and we landed on aiming for higher efficiency, more resilience for individual homes. I already heard the, the point that affordable housing is on its own standard, which is much, much higher than what we're doing here, so we don't have to worry about that and that commercial and market rate housing will have to meet the, the rigor of the new code, and it should do, honestly. So I really do encourage the council to vote in favor of keeping the stretch code, voting yes on that. And I just really thank all of you guys for paying attention to what is so niggly. I mean, I suppose you do that in all different ways, but I really appreciate you sort of taking the time to dive a little bit into what building code is and how these kind of codes have such incredible impact on our personal lives over decades in these buildings. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Naomi.
I'm Bob Stevens. And I live at 50 Moose Crossing. And there's not much I can add to what you've heard. I can point out to the three of you who were not on the council at the time that the council adopted the stretch code, that this was a response to public request, public petition. And a couple of hundred people signed petitions asking the council to do it. Those are on file with the town. The council said, "Yes, we'll do it. We want you to keep us going, keep that there." I was trying to figure out a sort of an analogy. You know, when you build a house, you need a roof, right? So you're meeting a need. You know, that need is you want to keep it dry and secure. So now what we've got is we've got insulation. So we've got the need to prevent that whole building heat loss and reduce the consumption of fossil fuel. I think that's got to be seen as a basic need like any other element of constructing a building. It's not an add-on. It's part of it. It's what we have to do. It ought to be a standard part of what's required. And I talked to a contractor and I asked him about this. What kind of effect is this going to have, do you think? And he said, "Look, to meet all the building code requirements, buy all the materials that are needed now, get approvals, labor costs," that this would not materially affect the cost of construction in his mind at a decision whether someone would build. So I wanted to pass that along to you and hope that we stay moving the way I think we have to, have to move. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. You can go up to the microphone so we can hear you.
We gathered the petition signatures at an election in Freeport. So they were all Freeport citizens. Among the people who signed it, close to 200, there were several builders who stopped by and encouraged us. They signed the petition. They encouraged us. Because in many cases, they were younger. From my 80-year-old perspective, that means they were 40. And they were established builders, but they were urging us to do that. It leveled the playing field for them because they were already doing that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
Well, yes, but nobody.
Who would like to speak? Anybody else who would like to speak for the public hearing? All right. So we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing and move the discussion up to the dais.
So just to be clear, in order to continue the stretch code, one would vote no?
Correct.
Okay.
So majority vote, I'll go over it one more time. Majority vote yes, it's repealed and we accept the language as we have it in our packet. Majority vote no, we are not repealing the stretch code. It goes back to staff to update the language and we set a public hearing because we are required to set a public hearing to change ordinance language, even if we're discussing it tonight. So. Counsel Egan.
I just want to point out that the reason why that's worded that way is that the last time when we introduced this item, the direction to staff was draft the ordinance as if it was going to be repealed.
Right, so it was, the reason it's this way right now was not written because of any council opinion, but because of that's how it was presented.
That's precisely why I want to illustrate why it's written the way it is.
Yes. Yep. Not a council opinion, it was how it was presented to us.
So you should remind us again when we go to vote. But is Nick still online?
Yep.
So Nick, thanks for the data. Would you say that those costs are indicative of like a median home value within the town of Freeport? The three examples, or the three that you looked at, would those represent roughly the median home value property within the town?
No, that was a small ranch, one-story ranch. It was not a typical, it was just an easy calculation for me to do because it's a square box. That way you don't have to add in all the, you know, if it was a cape or, you know, a cut-up, you know, some sort of like a chalet or something. But it's not like the normal starter home for Freeport. I would say it's more on the outskirts, like Durham area panel, probably.
Is there any way, because where I'm trying to go is I'm trying to figure out, you know, what that incremental cost is over the total price of the home and understand that as a percentage and then understand how that would factor into someone's decision to purchase a home at a slightly higher price while realizing potential energy savings while they live there? Do you have any sense of?
I don't have a lot of insight on that. That's why I asked a couple builders if they could come to the meeting or realtors. Unfortunately, they weren't able to come to the meeting. But that's kind of in their ball. I was just kind of gathering the data for you. I don't, kind of sorry to say neutral, not lean either way on this. But I can gather more data if needed.
Okay, no, thanks. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Counsel Egan.
I'm a little bit further away than, well, actually, a lot further away from the data than Nick is. But I'm in the housing world in my day job. And what I'd like to get to, I guess, is a bit of a, sort of a sidebar in this conversation that I think generally or anecdotally, doing stretch codes or pushing your house to be more energy efficient is often equated with a custom home at the high end of a price range because the homeowner or the home builder can afford to and is choosing to do that. And, which is great. And I think part of what the language here and what we heard with the petition from several years ago was, wouldn't we or shouldn't we, as a community, want that for everybody? And not just point to the examples of the people who can afford the seven or eight or $900,000 home and they've added these extra elements into it? So I'm, and I'm all in favor of creating as much of a fair opportunity for everybody to achieve these energy savings and not just for the folks that can afford to do it. And if we have a standard building code that stretches that and pushes for a little bit more, and if you get right down to it, it is more. There's no doubt that it's more, but it's not that much more. And I'm hoping that maybe there's a way for, when we're looking at larger divisions, I don't know if we'd be able to do it on an individual, single-family home. But if there's a way for the town to, while we're encouraging that and requiring that through our code, that we're also potentially helping in another way to equalize or mitigate some of that cost increase for either the homeowner or the home builder. Because I think it's important that it's not just the wealthy people who get to be insulated from climate change. It has to be, everybody in our community has a better chance at being insulated, literally, against climate change.
My sense about just the term, "stretch code," is that it's a misnomer. In the context of some things I've learned recently about what we need to do to do our part, this is a very small part. And it's hardly a stretch. When you start reading about homes that use, admittedly, these are people on the, these are leaders in a new way. These are leaders that are trying to create projects that demonstrate new ways of thinking, reframing, the kind of, you know, no one likes change. But when you hear about the 100-watt house, try to wrap your mind around that because all of us live in 10,000-watt houses. It's almost impossible to wrap your head around it. So it's not really that much of a stretch. I understand, and I really agree with what you just said, John, that finding other ways to streamline and make it more accessible to everyone, I thought that needed to be said.
I believe in insulation. But this would make it a lot more expensive for everybody. We already have a problem in this town. We don't have enough houses that people can afford. And this, you're right, it's only $15,000. But if you don't have enough to buy a house in town right now and you add $15,000 to it, you put everybody out. So all we have is wealthy houses and then, again, houses that are subsidized, which is where we are right now. I don't think that's where we want to be. I also think that we're forcing everyone to do this. It should be a choice. And if we pass this law or we don't repeal this, now we're forcing everyone to be the same instead of let the market take care of it, which the market is the way to go. And if you can afford it, I think everybody does it. And if they can't afford it, they can at least buy a house that they can eventually make where they need it to be. And we talk about, yep, you're going to save it over 15 years. Well, I've never been in a house, except when I was younger, for more than six years or seven years. Every time I get a house complete, I end up moving for some other reason. So, yeah, great, I'm going to pay this, I'm going to save this over 15 years and I'm out in seven. So the numbers don't work. And right now, we have that problem where I've been told that the numbers don't work for the projects that we have building. And adding this on is going to say, "Well, it's just a little bit more." Well, they don't work now, even a little bit more will make it not work. So I think we should repeal these until, well, repeal it and let it be a choice.
So this is a tough one. Like a lot of the decisions we make, I don't think it's black and white. It's not either we go forward or we go backwards. I think we're here because a year ago, we took the leap and said, "We want to be leaders and adopt the stretch code." And just a short year later, the state caught up to us and said, "The whole state should be at that stretch level," or what was defined as stretch a year ago. And now there's a new stretch. So if we don't adopt the new stretch, it doesn't mean we're going backwards. It doesn't mean we're rejecting all of the things that were said tonight. It's just about the pace. How quickly do we move in this direction? I think we all agree that we want to move in that direction. And it's just a question of, are we always stretching and stretching and stretching and stretching? Sometimes that's good. I'm glad that the affordable houses have their own building code that's at least as strong as the stretch code. And I'm glad that some people opt to seek that standard when they build their houses. I think of the starter houses, the workforce housing that we've said repeatedly we need to build where that $10,000 or $15,000 might make a difference. So again, I'm leaning towards not going forward with the stretch code, keeping what we had said was a stretch code last year in effect for a few more years, letting the industry catch up. And maybe we become leaders again and stretch in a couple of years. But I feel like we just stretched. Let's take a beat. And acknowledge all the things that were said and said that we want to continue moving in that direction, but not right now, not for me.
I do want to mention, we, council received a lot of emails about this issue, a lot of support. And the one, there was one that we received that was requesting that we do repeal it, which really struck me because it was an effort to build a 13, a sub-1,300-square-foot house on land that was already owned and how it added enough cost to make them kind of question it. And you know, that's very similar to a house that I live in. And if my house that I live in was $2,000 more money, I would have been priced out and looking somewhere else besides Freeport. And I'm, you know, I'm very sensitive to that testimony. And I really, I really want to be sure that we are thinking about sustainability and climate change efficiency in our housing. And I agree with you, Counsel Egan, that it shouldn't just be for the wealthy. It should be equitable access to that kind of benefit. And I think no matter what we do, there should be a way that we continue to check in on this. If we repeal it, how do we make sure in a year we continue this discussion? If we don't repeal it, how do we make sure in a year we make sure it's still working? I don't know how we can make sure we keep our word on that, too. Is if we say we want to revisit in a year, making sure we actually do.
We put it on the calendar and we asked Chris to circle it on her recurring agenda items and it pops back up as an item of other business, I would say.
Order, Mr. Trump. In fact, you really can't do anything else. You go one or the other, you're not going to be able to make any changes.
Bob, can you just go up to the microphone?
It took six years for the state to move on from 2015 to 2021. The only options are, we stick with the code, for a lot of good reasons, just what Dan said, or in fact, we take the stretch. There won't be another stretch opportunity for a long time. You do one or the other.
And I think, correct, but we can bring it up at any point. So we could discuss it again whenever we feel like.
But I don't think you can change the law.
That's not what she's saying.
No, I'm saying that you're correct that we either adopt it or we don't.
Okay, I understand.
But we can, as a council, revisit if we stretch or not, anytime.
I don't know whether that's true. Anyway, I don't know whether that's true.
Yeah, they can update it.
Anytime.
This is one that I've struggled with ever since our last meeting. And I've had multiple conversations and I've read a lot of emails. And I think it is, as much as I want Freeport to be in that leadership position, I think we're also all struggling with what is it that we need to do to get housing built in Freeport? I'm very sensitive to the idea that whatever cost savings you have upfront, you are essentially locking in that larger expense for the lifetime of the building, which is not just how long you live there, it's the lifetime of the building. And I'm thinking really just about my own experience. I own two houses in Freeport. One is a 1790s cape that's been retrofitted and retrofitted and retrofitted and retrofitted. And I have lost track, I can't tell you how many tanks of oil I've burned this winter, while burning wood. I have another home that was built entirely with six-inch SIP panels with an R-factor of, I don't know, somewhere between 24 and 60. And I've looked at all the disclosure forms. Nobody who's ever owned that house in the 13 years since it was built has ever burned a full tank of propane, which is the only heat source in the house. And, you know, one of the things we want is, we don't just want housing now, we want housing that's going to last. We want people that are going to live here in this community for years to come. And I do think that we want to continue to push what's possible. I think one of the things that's come up in a number of conversations that I've had with folks over the last couple of weeks is, and this has come up in conversation with Nick as well, is that part of it is getting people to understand the new technology and how to build with it and what's available. And the fact, as Counselor Brown said, that the change is hard. It's hard not only for the folks that are paying for it, it's also hard for the people that need to keep up with all of this technology and how they're going to implement it in new construction. And I do think that we are pushing how fast we can get to that point where we're using all of this new technology. So I'm sort of sitting with you, Dan, of can we take a beat? Let us rest with this for a minute and then come back in a couple of years and re-adopt the stretch code? But I'm also just very aware that whatever we get built in those couple of years, we've locked in those energy costs for the people that live in them when we could have been locking in savings.
Any more discussion? So we can get it on the table. we can get it on the table. We can, if we want more information, we can table it to get more information. I'm not advocating for any way. I just am putting that out there.
If you're asking for more information from staff, my only request is that you be specific about what you need. But also, sometimes it's not about more information. Sometimes you need a few minutes to ruminate on your own in a quiet space and decide what you want to do. So I, while I don't want to encourage the council not to take action because I know it's a tough decision, but if you feel like you don't have the information you need or aren't ready, you could table it.
And I will, I have a question to clarify. If we did table it, or even if we vote no, so we keep the stretch code, what is the status quo? So what would Nick be enforcing?
That's a great question.
Currently, right now, the way that the ordinance is written, we are on the 2021 stretch code. The, it says the 15 building codes and the ASHRAE standards are outdated. We are preempted on those. So even if they're outdated, we are on the new building and valuation standards. But the way that the ordinance, Chapter 11, is written is we are on the 2021 stretch code currently.
To your point, Eric, I don't know what you're talking about as far as learning to build with the new technologies, but 15 years ago, 16 years ago, I turned a barn into living quarters and I used spray foam because I wanted to make sure that, and I significantly reduced it. But that was my choice and I had built that into the plan. SIP panels have been around for just as long, if not longer. So we already have the technology. Right now, we're talking about cost. And at some point, the extra cost saving does not, the benefit of the extra cost savings does not fit the model of what we're trying to do as far as getting people in town. There's going to be a point where we've got so much insulation in there that if we put another 10 grand into it, we're going to save a penny. I don't know where we are right now, but you know what I'm saying. It's not, the, the cost to get one more ounce of carbon out of the air isn't going to, isn't worth the cost of spending an extra $1,000, right? Right now, I think we're close to that point. But it's a cost and we, we're just adding cost to this. And I don't think we should kick it down the road, which is what I think we're about to do. But I think we should wait, take a heart, take a break and say, okay, here's, we've gone this far. We're not going to go all the way right now because of the problem we have. And it's everywhere. And it, it's been a problem, I guess, since we started putting building codes in that we always put, every time we put a new building code, it costs more to build. Initially, the building codes were to make sure the building was safe and not going to fall down, right? We still have that problem. But that's, that's why the codes were there to make sure when you bought a house, it was safe. Now we're talking about all the ancillary things. And I do think you need to, up here, since you're not spending a fortune on fuel, you do an insulate. But right now, this is about cost and adding an extra 15 grand or two grand can put someone that might be able to afford a house that isn't super wealthy and isn't in the affordable or the subsidized housing to buy a house here in town.
Sure. So I, I think it's really important that we are talking about how the building codes, building energy codes are done. They are done based on cost effectiveness. They cannot just increase things without it paying for those savings. So like, I, I don't think it's accurate to say that it's just adding cost because they look at the lifetime savings. I think, yeah, I think the, the point is, how much of a barrier are the upfront costs versus the lifetime saving?
Right. But I'm buying the house and I'm going to be in it for eight years. I'm not going to get the full benefit that everybody else is going to get. It's nice of me to do that for everyone that lives down the town. But right now, the upfront costs prohibit people that I think we want to live here. I'd like, if my kids could afford to live here, and they would put it out, put them out, put it out of that range.
I think we should vote tonight. I think we should vote tonight.
All right. So we will go ahead with the be it ordained. Counselor Pilch, I believe it's you.
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 11 Building Code to update code references and repeal of the stretch energy code be approved.
Second.
All right. Refresher. A majority vote yes, it's repealed. We accept language as written, done. Majority vote no, we do not repeal it. It goes back to Nick to update the language and then we set another public hearing per statute requirements. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's two. All those not in favor?
Aye.
That's five. Did you get that, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. I just really appreciate council having a very, that's a toughie, let me tell you. And I really appreciate my fellow counselors kind of getting through that one and the care and time we've put into the research. My request is certainly that we, we continue talking about this and see in a year, year and a half, how it's, how it's going.
So the next thing that's going to happen is you will get an updated draft ordinance that will come back for you to set a public hearing on that updates our ordinance with the appropriate references for the stretch.
And thank you to everybody who came out tonight and offered such thoughtful comments. I appreciate you researching this, thinking about it and spending your time here. Thanks for coming out.
It was great discussing.
I agree. I agree, Bob.
Yeah. And I do want to recognize that I, I think this council all agrees is we need to prioritize climate change effective solutions and also somehow make sure we get houses and people here. And that's a balance we'll have to keep thinking about. So.
Good segue into our affordable housing.
Yes. I did that on purpose. Okay. Moving on to item 46-25. This is to consider action relative to accepting the annual affordable housing tax increment financing district reports. Min, I have you introducing this one.
So these reports are annual reports that the town have to submit to the state certifying that the affordable housing TIF are conforming. And right now, we have three. I've checked them. Property ownership has not changed and we have not had any reports stating that they're not conforming.
Any questions for Min? Okay. Thanks, Min. Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that the Maine State Housing Authority annual affordable housing tax increments finance district reports for the Quarry Ridge, Oakleaf Two, and Wildwood apartments covering the period April 1, 2024 to March 31, 2025 be accepted.
Seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7-0. All right, moving on to item 47-25. This is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing regarding a proposed new TIF and related credit enhancement agreement. And we have Brett Richardson and Matt Peters here.
Hey, everybody. Brett Richardson, Development Director for the town. Here to talk about a great project that's been in the works for a while. A lot of hard work has gone into it by the Freeport Housing Trust and a developer named Tim Gooch. And we're at a good point to move the TIF forward. So happy Matt could be here tonight to provide some more details. I'll do a quick intro and turn it over to him. So Barney Heights Senior Apartments, 42 units, 55 plus from an age standpoint. It's going to be located in the designated growth area in the Dogbone, received PRB approval in November. And a key point here is we consider TIF. This project won't happen without town support. So this is an important ingredient in the financing, which Matt will provide more detail on shortly. And the local town investment will also leverage significant state investment. So it's a good opportunity for the town to create some housing with broad support. It's also important to note, as we get into the term, that the fiscal impact analysis that GP COG did, that we worked through, identified that this project would require about 50% of the new tax revenue to serve its residents. So keep that in mind, 50%. The rest can accrue to the general fund. This was endorsed by FEDC as consistent with talent TIF policy. And the TIF application that's in front of you tonight has been reviewed by the Maine Housing Attorney and considered appropriate and accurate and would be achieving Maine Housing support should be moved forward. It's important to note, too, that what we're talking about here on this parcel is not relevant to the existing tax revenues that it creates and contributes to the town. It's about tax revenues from the new investment that wouldn't happen if we don't support it. So we're talking about the increment in tax increment financing. And then this is a, just a summary of the tips that are in place. And the point of this slide is, the main point of the slide is that Freeport has a good track record of supporting projects like this, affordable housing. And to Dan, to your earlier question about the tax shift, this, this increment, which we'll get to in a minute, is a $4 million increment. And the two tips that are expiring are TIF 2 and TIF 2.7, who have a combined captured assessed value in the 70s. So I think we're probably pretty safe on that tax shift. So yeah, a great project, fits with the way that the town's behaved in the past and supported projects in the past. It's also important to note that the town is well below the state's 5% land cap and the state's 5% valuation cap. And then real quick, the way that's structured in this application that you guys have seen, talking about a 30-year term, the increased assessed value, Min's left, but about $4 million in new value. It's going to generate about $53,000, I'm sorry, that's a typo there, $53,500 a year in new revenues. And the way this is structured is 50% would accrue to the general fund, stay with the town. 50% would go to the, the housing trust to enable project financing and allow the project to move forward. There'll be affordability covenants in place for 45 years. And as we just saw from Min, the assessor, the town actually stays on top of that to make sure that they're in place. And then this, over the course of 30 years, is going to generate a tax shift of just shy of $125,000 bucks under the current, current structure. And that occurs because our valuation stays flat, even though the value of this project has contributed. And then when the county and the state do their formulas, our value stays where it's at now instead of being increased. So we avoid an increase in county tax and state revenue if we, that would occur if we didn't put it into a tax increment financing district. So that's the overview. And we'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Brett. Hi, I'm Matt Peters, the Executive Director of the Freeport Housing Trust. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about the development itself. Thanks, Brett, for going over the, the number stuff. That's good. So we've presented this before to you, so we don't need to go too in-depth about it. But it's, it has been, I think, a year since we first talked about it. Tim Gooch and Freeport Housing Trust are working together to buy land from LL Bean directly across the street from a, a property that Freeport Housing Trust has 30 apartments on already. And so we've got a good team that can both get the building through the PRB successfully, which we've done already, and through construction with LaJoy Contractors, LaJoy Brothers. They have an office in Brunswick. And, and then operating with our current property management company, Preservation Management. And Freeport Housing Trust currently owns eight properties in town, 183 apartments. This will add a significant percentage to that. We already have one 25-unit building that's restricted to households that are 55 and over. And so we know how that property operates. And we're excited to add more because we always have a good, solid waitlist at that property. And it's in a different part of town, too. So it's nice to have some diversity. So the building is one building, three-story building with a flat roof that has 42 apartments. Up at the top of the screen is Varney Road. And then across that is Varney Square, the 30-unit property. The parcel that we are purchasing from LL Bean is part of a larger, about 55-ish acre parcel that extends out to Route 1 and then back along Varney Road. We'll be purchasing just over nine acres and then developing about half of it. So half of the other parcel goes on the other side of this stream that bifurcates it. So we'll be leaving the right half of the property alone, staying out of the wetlands. When we got our Maine Housing Financing, one of their requirements due to some funding sources was that we have zero impact on the wetlands. And so we've been able to push the building and the parking lot out of that area. And so this is the site plan with the access off of Varney Road into parking. There's picnic tables and garden beds as an amenities. And can you go to maybe the next slide? Yeah. So this is a rough look at what the building looks like. We don't, we don't have the super fancy pretty pictures because they're, but this is, this is what we will be building. Next slide. Some, a look at sample interiors. So there's going to be a community room with a, a large community room with a kitchenette area, another library, a onsite laundry room and onsite property management. Go to next slide. And a couple sitting areas throughout, just. Next slide. So rent will include heat, air conditioning, and domestic hot water. And then we'll have onsite property management, maintenance, and a resident service coordinator to help people connect with what they need and stay connected socially as well. That's an important part. So everybody always asks for these. So it just, they're up there, you know, I can go through them a little bit. But what this chart shows is that there's a mix of one and two-bedroom apartments. Most of them are one-bedroom. We only have four two-bedrooms. And there's a mix of rent levels, three different rent levels. We were able to get a couple apartments that have rental assistance, three apartments that will have rental assistance at the property for those with very low income. And the remainder will be, the one-bedrooms will be rented at a little over $1,100 and $1,350. And then the two-bedrooms will be rented a little bit more than that because they're two bedrooms. And then these are the rough income guidelines of, you have to be below that in order to qualify to move in. We do have a lot of people, I'm sure you know a lot of people who are over 55, who still still work. And so if you are working and you make, end up making more than the limit in years after you move in, then you get to stay. And so your rent is stabilized and you're not required to move out. Next slide. So just a review, again, of where we're at. We do have a hard construction number. We've finished all of our drawings, and so all of the budget is coming together on the project, and we are working to close in July, which, as John can tell you, is very soon. And so... And then we'll start construction then, and it'll be a 15-month construction duration. And so start lease-up in the fall of 2026. So this is the development budget right now. What the TIF allows us to do is, we pay the full amount of property taxes, I think Brett said just under $54,000. And then the town rebates half, roughly half of that back to the property. That income allows us to then borrow more money. And so that helps close, that increases this line. And so without that, we would have an even bigger gap. And as you can see already, we've had some adjustments in our equity markets that have created some significant gaps. And we usually don't plan on putting any money in at the beginning, but you can see where we are now. The Freeport Housing Trust is looking at putting in roughly a million dollars to make this project start construction in July.
Wow.
So I think this is a little redundant, but it's a good site, and we're excited to be a part of adding more housing to Freeport. We just, it's amazing how much it comes up in every conversation and apparently every council meeting, too. So I think that's it. Last slide. So any questions, Brett and I are here.
Where is this going?
Where's the building going?
Yeah.
It's... You know where Antonia's is?
Yep.
So you go drive down Varney Road.
Okay.
And there's the Dotons building, and then it's the parcel right next to that.
Yeah, okay. Too bad we can't do this for younger kids.
Matt, I know there's no sidewalk in the project, and I'm not proposing that you add one. Do you have an idea of roughly what that would cost? And would you be supportive if we figured out a way to pay for it in the future?
Yes, we have, we got an estimate two years ago, I think, from the town, that it was about $100,000. And that would be a sidewalk from Route 1 down to the edge of our property where we have a little path that connects. Yeah, I would be highly supportive of it for just our, so we'll have 72 apartments, you know, if you include the people who would use it from Varney Square. But that was a big point from the households that lived at the end of Varney Road as well. I mean, they wouldn't benefit from a sidewalk all the way up. But I think also equally important is adequate, and we heard it a little bit earlier this morning, or earlier in the meeting, adequate signage for crossing Route 1 to connect to the rest of the sidewalk system.
Any other questions for Matt or Brett? Go for it.
Thanks, Matt, great presentation. Can you just confirm a couple of things? You got, you said project rental assistance, is that from a local housing authority that's providing that, or is it from main housing?
It's from main housing as part of, it comes in tandem with their housing trust funds, which is federal funding.
So that's a couple of one-bedrooms and a two-bedroom that actually have an operating rental assistance for the residents who live there to get to that deep targeting. But otherwise, the other 30, whatever did it?
39.
39 project, I'm sorry, the other 39 units, the rents that you illustrated, everybody living in those units pays that rent. So it's not a subsidized property in terms of comparison to many sort of reference properties of, oh, that's subsidized housing. This is below-market rents, but everybody living there has to pay their rent, is that true?
Correct, yeah.
And can you confirm that Freeport Housing Trust has the $939,000 to contribute to this, which is significant? And that main housing has seen this sources and uses structure, and that's what they're prepared to close on?
Correct.
Okay. And how long has the Freeport Housing Trust been around?
35 years.
Great, thank you.
All right. Did you have a question or a thought?
I, Matt, thanks for the slide that was listing out all of the types of apartments and criteria and rent, that is really helpful. Just as a point of information, are the income restrictions for the 55-plus any different generally than other affordable housing? How do those compare?
It's, they're, the income limits are not different from other types of affordable housing that we have in Freeport that are similar programs. So like, across the street of Varney Square, about 2/3 of those apartments are similarly restricted, and so their income limits are similar, even though they're not 55-plus. Yeah.
All right, so again, this was to set two public hearings. I'm sorry, Counselor Pillsbury.
This is great, thank you. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 6, 2025, in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM to allow the public to provide comment regarding a new affordable housing tax increment financing district for 9.23 acres of a 52-acre property on Varney Road, map 23, Lot 55, to be called the Varney Heights Senior Apartments' Affordable Housing TIF. That will allow the Town Council to determine whether the district and development program will contribute to the expansion of affordable housing or to the betterment of the health, welfare, or safety of the residents, as well as to consider any claim by a party that the district or development program will be detrimental to that party's property interests for which substantial evidence is produced, and whether any adverse economic effect is outweighed by the availability of affordable housing or the betterment of resident health, welfare, or safety. Further, be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 6, 2025, in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM to consider a credit enhancement agreement with the Freeport Housing Trust, Varney Heights LP, associated with the proposed Varney Heights Senior Apartments' Affordable Housing TIF District.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, moving on to item 48-25, to consider action relative to adopting the FY '26 to FY '30 municipal capital investment plan. And Jessica, I'll leave it to you.
Good evening. So you have an updated draft capital improvement plan in front of you. The only changes within that are ones that have been discussed already before you. There is the inclusion, working our way from the front to the back. So on the Police Department Article 1, we made some adjustments to the vehicle replacement line to adjust some monetary values for pending tariffs and concerns that we have with replacing our vehicles. So we updated the plan with our best estimate at this time of what we think that impact will be. And the second adjustment is all the way to the back on the TIF articles to include under the Destination Freeport TIF, the amounts for the town economic development activities.
Can you clarify the cost that you added?
So for the vehicles, it's about, right around $7,000 additional for each vehicle in each year, roughly. And then under the TIF article, it's the full amount, as we did not have that included. So for FY '26, it's $130,000, FY '27, $135,000, changing again, and FY '29 to $140,000. So that entire line has been updated.
Is that $130,000 on you? Is that? Is that for town staff and economic development?
Yes, that's development, staff and activities, it's encompassed of the budget.
Do you, just to save the math, do you have a total of what the total impact that you had to adjust, the police vehicles due to the pending tariffs, and how much that cost the town?
Let's see. Sorry, I did not think to grab the old one and make the comparison, but I would say... Bear with me. Helps if you open the right app. I'm going to say it added approximately $45,000.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other thoughts, questions? All right. Go for it.
I just want to clarify, because it was a point of conversation when we were talking about their rescue budget, there, what's in here includes the plan to replace the ambulance, which would keep us with three functioning ambulances, is that correct?
That is the current plan that is still under evaluation, which we should get information after we do the assessment.
Okay.
Because we had also talked about getting some information on how often three ambulances were in use.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so what I have learned, working with Jessica, the town of Freeport is, looks at these capital plans as something that they don't want to see massive swings in in a five-year plan. So the thought was, leave it there, understand that the vehicle, that we're going to have to make a decision about that, but we're waiting for the data to be able to do it. So I would rather see it there and then understand that we don't have permission to do that until we've come back and had a conversation with council.
I think the other consideration is if one is in the, one's in the shop, you need one to be there. So if we really need two, you probably need three so that you don't lose that.
My other question is about solid waste. Given our conversations over the last few months related to recycling and the possibility of needing an additional compactor at the transfer station, was that considered as a possible capital addition to the capital plan?
So I didn't consider it for FY '26. If you wanted to try to put something in there for FY '27, I just, I don't think we're going to be ready for, to do something this year because it's going to take policy choices. I do have a call out to a colleague that might be able to give us assistance in how we might set up a little bit differently to help some of the concerns that Rod had reviewed. I'm just not ready to do that quite yet.
I just think that's something to keep in mind when we get into the operating budget related to recycling.
Probably pay for that compactor container in, let's say, less than three years after we're not hauling half-empty trailers down the highway.
Sorry to belabor it, the economic development cost, that just got shifted from the operating, the general fund to here, because we were paying those costs anyway? Were you planning to pay those costs?
No, no, they're currently being paid out of TIF funds. There was some miscommunication, I misunderstood what Sophie was looking for when we did the initial presentation of this.
But if they weren't in here, it would likely have been added to the operating budget.
Correct.
Okay. Not new money, it's just different.
I will say it again, this is a great format. I'm very happy with this, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you ready, John?
I can read this one.
All right, go for it.
Be it ordered that the FY '26 through FY '30 municipal capital investment plan be adopted.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye, 7-0, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that...
And Chris will be happy that she no longer has to print versions of this capital plan for the council.
I know, I feel, I feel a little guilty every time, but it is necessary.
I think we have silver bullets to put all this stuff in.
That's right, that's how we'll fill them. All right, moving on.
Burn them in my wood stove.
So we will move to our public comment period, part two. This is limited to comments on items not on the agenda for virtual attendees.
No hint.
All right. Moving on to other business. Just a heads up to counselors, we are not discussing council goals, we are going to talk about that our next meeting.
Yeah, I made a mistake and flipped the apartment head meeting, and it's really happening after this meeting and not before this meeting, so I need to go back to them one more time.
All right, so the one item we have for other business is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Overview and Process Update. So some context, Caroline will give an overview of the plan and some of the processes that led to it. This is so that council feels comfortable, we get our questions answered, and we send it off to the state for their review.
It worked. So tonight, we're here to talk about the municipal investment plan. As part of the process, we're going to have the state law and our personnel to act and be there for that.
For that, and part of that is the ability to submit it to the state. Are you hearing that, Alpha Lekka? Tom will come back.
Hey, Tom.
Turn it down.
Okay, so part of that is sending it to the state. So there's a simple form, towns do it in different ways, but the Chair of the Planning Board and the Chair of the Council would sign off on the form, which we included in your packets, just to say, hey, we think we've gone through a public process, and we have prepared this plan through that public process, which we feel is ready for a review and we feel like is compliant with the requirements of the Growth Management Act. We hired a consultant for this project, North Star Planning, they're experienced in this, so they have led us to the process of getting this draft document that we feel is in that position. So we'll just give you a little update, we'll see how we did, I predicted what you might want to know. So this draft comes with an endorsement from the Planning Board. You might remember that we met last time, the last community workshop on March 19th. We had draft vision statement, goals, policies, and some other things, the future land use map that we talked about. We got some feedback, North Star made some adjustments to that plan, and we sent a copy to the council and the Planning Board at the same time, so you could have ample time to go through it. There was... There was some changes, some wordsmithing, mostly, I think the biggest change was to the vision, and then we'll talk about another change that comes up. So, quick crash course, the planning board started this project in December '23, and everyone else in Freeport started it pretty quickly after. We've been talking about this pretty much every month at regular planning board meetings, for an hour and a half to two hours. Charles and Ben, who are online tonight, we gave them the night off from coming to Freeport, because they've been here every month. They've been there regularly, we've done the survey. We had originally scoped for community workshops, but after hearing from our community, we did go ahead and add that fifth workshop that most of you were able to attend. So basically, the way to look at the draft plan is everything we've been talking about as a community since that time put into one. So you've seen a lot of the maps, you've already talked about the survey, you've talked about the vision, the policies. It's now been formatted, cleaned up, sent to boarding committees for feedback, posted online for feedback, put a bow on it, and to get it into a better draft form. So the key components of the plan are the ones we reviewed on the 19th. The vision, the future land use section and map, and the goals and policies, including the implementation table. Questions, or are we good? So what I'm going to show you next is messy. I'm probably going to get some feedback tomorrow that didn't read great on screen, but I'm going to go with it. Because I thought it was important for you to be able to see what changes were made to the vision statement as a result of the discussion on the 19th, because we had good discussion. So the messy slide, Sophie, just look the other way. So I went ahead and retyped this into track changes today, just so you could see the wordsmithing that happened as a result of that community conversation. The planning board looked at this revised draft at their May second meeting. They were pretty comfortable with it. The one thing they kind of had discussion on, or that kind of jumped out, was on the last sentence, they kind of retweeted it to kind of list out values that defined Freeport. And so they included equity, responsible stewardship of resources, and strong community connections. The planning board was, had discussion as to whether or not equity is the right word. This is a big project for Freeport, and it's all about finding balance, and it's finding a good balance of the values that our whole community wants, or that are generally acceptable to the entire community. So, you know, we're trying to get something acceptable to 8,400 people into one document. So there was some discussion on wording there. The planning board, a couple members, I think, jumped on it more than others, but the consensus of the planning board is maybe that needs some adjustment. So some of the ideas North Star had was simply changing that to including social equity, or another term was social and economic, or economic and cultural diversity. So if the council has thoughts on that, we welcome it. We welcome thoughts on the vision statement. Again, tonight, we're here, just walk through this at a high level, so that Joanna's comfortable enough after hearing from you guys to send the form. The plan is going to be at the state for two and a half months, and if we need another time to go through this and wordsmith a little more, we have the next two and a half months. So welcome any thoughts, or I can keep going, and then we can come back to whatever you want to talk about. So I did ask about this, and thank you for reviewing it. I think the, what I heard on March 19th, and what I also value living here, is kind of the difference in socioeconomic backgrounds that we have in Freeport, and how that is kind of, not at risk, but something that's worth trying to protect and maintain. So that's what I, I don't know if this captures it, but that was kind of my thought of not just our natural resources and housing in downtown, but making sure that that gets included somehow as well, so.
So do you like the kind of reworded economic and cultural diversity, or backgrounds, or something like that?
Yeah, yep.
Like that would still reflect it?
Go for it.
I don't want to start getting into the wordsmithing here, but I, you know, there's so many places where we get divided, and while I would encourage, you know, a clear phrase of diversity, I think that's the wrong word, because I think that's a trigger word, and we don't need to be saying something inadvertently when we're not saying it, because somebody reads that word a certain way. So I'm, you know, and maybe other words will get to be to this level of division, but, you know, when I explain why I like living in Freeport, a phrase that comes to mind is a range of backgrounds, or a range of experiences, a range of people across the economic spectrum, and a range of people across the employment spectrum. We have clambers and fishermen, and we have high-end executives living in the same block. So I, you know, which I think is remarkable. So I try and encourage us to stay away from division words like equity and diversity, because they bring too much connotation and too much baggage, and there's a way for us to say that, you know, a broad range of experiences, or something like that.
I agree. I could not agree more with what you just said. And I agree that maybe it's not the time to get in the wordsmith, but I think that captures the essence of what we're getting at, so.
So although we kind of gave North Star the night off, they are listening, and so I want to hear your feedback, and then I'm going to expect that they'll take that, and Charles and Ben, I know will come up with some creative wording to reflect your values, and we can incorporate that into the draft, but I'd love to hear if others have thoughts.
Right, and I think it's not necessarily switching out a word, but maybe...
Phrase. Yep. And that was the concern with using equity, and I think diversity, like, right now, they're politically loaded for different reasons, and that's not what we want to go.
Correct. We can just take that right out. Responsible stewardship of resources, and strong community connections.
If we want to include socioeconomic backgrounds, or economic background, Freeport loves the word variety. We love variety stores.
We love the word variety, yeah.
And if we could have a variety of social economic backgrounds, or so...
Why don't you say a variety of people?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, we're partially defined by the strata that we, so recognizing that we actually like that is maybe worth including.
And I think it's also a defining value of, you know, why we care so much about making sure we have different levels and kinds of housing, and a transit-oriented development potential, so.
Okay, so are we comfortable with them hearing our feedback and making an adjustment, and looking forward to what they come with for round two of the plan, or do you want to put them on the spot and hear what they have for idea?
I think we are...
We're good? Okay. So I'm going to move everyone else good? Dan? Yep. Okay. So the other thing we had a lot to talk about, and I'm sorry, this doesn't reproduce great, but you all have this in your pockets. The other thing that we talked about was the future land use map, and there was quite a bit of discussion at the meeting on this map. And I hope since then, you've taken a look at our current comp plan. I went back and took a look at the current comp plan, and I, I think this is the one area that I'm going to want to talk about. It's the one area that plane would want to talk about. So it's interesting. I went back, on the left is the current comp plan. I went back and looked at it. It's a little wishy-washy, which we hear about our current comp plan, because we list out certain growth areas, but then we have this map with these labels. So for example, on the left-hand side, you see some purple and yellow, and those are village, commercial, local business growth, and industrial growth. So we don't list them in one place, but we list them down there. So when you look at the future land use map on today's comp plan, I think there's a couple major differences. One, it goes all the way up to the Brunswick line, and it says we have public utilities. We don't have public utilities. I don't know how that got in there, nor at this point do we believe that that's economically viable for the town. So it made sense to pull the growth area down to the village, and that's what we've been talking about. That's where people really want to see us focus our growth. The current map, which I cut off, it did go out a little bit on either side from the village, but I felt like we didn't hear a lot of comments questioning the boundaries right in the village. What we did hear a variety of comments on is the area, the west of the highway, out on Desert Road. So if you look at the left, you can see on either side of Desert Road, the north and south, there were areas identified for different types of growth. The purple is actually industrial growth, and our zoning matches what we said we wanted there. Those are industrial areas, they don't allow housing, they allow typical industrial uses. On the north side of Desert Road, there's also some industrial zoning, but we don't have much out there. There's a couple houses, there's some land owned by a large landowner, and then the public works facility. So...
Caroline, do you recall when Cross Tree, it was known by something else when it came in for permitting? That's probably five or six years, it was pre-COVID when they came in.
Yep.
Do you remember if we did any zone change, or wasn't there some sort of an adjustment because of that? Because it was industrial, and they were trying to put in high-density multifamily?
Yeah, so they did come in for a zone change. They made it commercial four, to allow the high-density residential with some open space. So they did make a change at that point. I'm going to get questions, or am I just going to say it? Our current charter says that between Desert Road and Beach Hill, we can't have a growth area. I don't know why these maps showed this within that area, but we're not going to do what the charter says we can't do. So the new growth area doesn't show the areas on the north side of Desert Road, and also you'll notice the southern boundaries change, because if you remember, we now have LD 2003. LD 2003, for zones and growth areas that allow housing, you have to do certain things. And it's much easier for us to implement it if it follows property lines. So the boundaries to the left on the Desert Road area do follow the property lines, which is why you'll see it kind of juts up. The land all to the south is the golf course. So why did the planning board decide to keep it in? We heard different reactions from the community. We've heard from our community, we want to focus growth downtown, but we know this plan is a 12-year plan. We're, maybe we'll implement it all overnight, but maybe not, because things take a while. So they left it in, knowing that that area is not top priority, but it has connectivity to trails, it has connectivity to the highway, it's walkable, and it has public utilities. And so they felt that it made sense. It might not be our top priority, but if we want to change to housing, a more high-density housing, or if we want to switch from industrial, having it in a growth area helps us implement those changes, because any changes that the council and planning board make to our land use ordinances need to be consistent with the comp plan. So that's just one more way.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Or make a comment? I think, you know, some of the feedback we've received is concerned that it's sort of identified similarly as other, at least Route 1 South, and would that compete with downtown? Could that potentially compete with making sure we're focusing on downtown development?
Well, that's kind of jumping ahead to the implementation table, but it could, right? It could. I think if a developer chose that that's where they wanted to build, they could come in, and it would be another tool that would help them, because we said, okay, this is somewhere we want to see growth. We haven't gotten into what types of growth, but we know that this plan is set up, just like the climate action plan, that you're going to meet annually with the planning board to set priorities. I think coming out of that, and we'll talk about it in the implementation table, that our community is very aligned, that we still want to protect the rural areas, and our priority is our downtown. So I think that's how we're going to hit the ground running, but, you know, in three years, there's something going to change, and you guys are like, nope, we're going to shift over to that way. You know, it's unpredictable. But I feel like the discussion at the planning board is, they wanted to leave it in there, but it's not the top priority. One of the other questions I've got is, people feel like, just because it's in a growth area, the zoning changes. Well, that's not true. We still have to go through a whole public process to change the zoning. So this has been zoned industrial. I don't think it's really changed much in many years. So it is a project, project and a process. We know today that the planning board priority from you is most likely going to be to focus on the village zoning, and getting that fixed up, especially in the downtown and the dogbone area.
Can I ask the reverse question? By leaving something out of the growth area? So I'm looking at the golf course property, or in that area in general. If somebody figures out how to thread that needle and wants to build more dense housing there, does leaving it out of the growth area mean that we can't do zone change, or shouldn't do zone change, or how does that impact?
It doesn't mean you can't. Again, any change needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If it's not in the growth area, you won't have to comply with LD 2003, but somebody else won't be able to come in and say, hey, we want to put all this high-density housing here. And one of the things you guys are going to say is, well, nice, and you could decide it's consistent in other ways with the comp plan, but it wasn't in an area through this process that was identified. Now, through the golf course, one of the interesting things is, you'll see that blue circle where it says US Route 1, that was identified as a possible transition area to kind of higher density, but kind of a bridge between the commercial and the rural. We had that in a couple spots, and the planning board did look at it in the past, and people didn't want to do it. We then had an application come in on some of that industrial land, and to change the rural land of the golf course, and our community did not want that. So that has not been incorporated into this plan intentionally. I think, I look at it as, other than LD 2003, I think it's a tool to help you move things forward, and know where your community wants to prioritize growth and development.
And it's a plan, right, which is a guideline. It's, this is what we have to do, so. Sorry, I didn't have my mic on for that.
So do you guys have feedback on the future land use map? And are you okay with it going forward as is, or do you feel like it warrants discussion, and you want to revisit the boundaries? We can go to the end, and then once you hear the process, if you want to change your mind, I'll give you a chance. All right. So implementation. So when we originally sent you the plan, there was an implementation table with a lot of blanks. What we did at the last planning board meeting is, we brought that table, and we had them identify priorities. So we did short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Short-term, we were thinking, you know, between '26 and 2029, and then medium-term was the next three or four years, and then the final stage would be out till 2033. So the planning board brought, based upon, I guess, their opinions, because you all bring opinions, but what they heard from the community, what they feel the short and long-term priorities would be. Aligned with what we've heard from the community, most of those were housing. A lot of them are related to housing. So we filled in what their short and medium-term priorities were. Staff went through it, knowing that the council had just set goals, and some, knowing some things that were on the horizon, some things that were in other plans, like climate action and downtown vision, and we put values in for their, for terms. And then you'll see, we also had to populate who's going to implement them. A lot of those come to you guys, because a lot of them require municipal resources of staff time, dollar time, or boarding committees. We did try to leave it somewhat vague, so instead of mentioning the historical society, you know, we left it open for community partners, whoever that might be at the time. When we talked about this as staff, we didn't really want to fill in those two columns, because we just did it for the downtown vision and the climate action, and we've learned how important the conversations are to have the regular check-ins with the council, to make sure we're setting the priorities together and using the resources we have available. And if we know if a great grant opportunity comes in, we might shuffle. But the state wants us to have values, so we did take a good faith effort and attempt to identify our values as they are today. Once the plan gets adopted, it's a working document, just like the climate action plan, we've already shuffled some stuff around. So we set this up with the intent that the planning board and council will work on this together, we'll use the implementation table as a tool, we'll meet once a year, we can meet as much as you want, but we don't want to overcommit, because we don't want to get to a point that we're meeting just to meet. And if we say we're going to meet four times, that's four more meetings that everybody's going to have to go to. And then each year, we're committing to a more in-depth assessment every three years. I like this plan. I think it's a good, the plan for implementation, I think it's a good way to keep us on track. You know, now we've just kind of had a table behind the scenes, and the planning board's just been picking away. I think collaboration is really the key to our success for implementation here. So you, I did send you the table filled in today. Again, we have to have it populated to send to the state, which we do, we feel like it's accurate, but over the next two and a half months, we welcome feedback. If you want us to get more specific with boards and committees, or make some adjustments, Sophie and I are happy to work through that with Kyle and do that. So what are the next steps from here? So the hope is tonight that everyone feels comfortable with this plan, that we've had a good process, we've got a lot of community input, and we... a good process, we've got a lot of community input, and we think we have a product that's heading in the right direction. If you do that, then I'm going to run to Joanna after the meeting and have her sign the form. And by the end of the week, the plan will be emailed to the state of Maine in both paper and digital copy. That process is expected to take about two and a half months. So, the plan will go in the mail by Friday. Next week, online, we'll put a complete plan on the future Freeport website. We're going to do some outreach with Pete, our Communications Director at North Star, through the mailing list. We're going to send people to the website for feedback. We're going to create a Google form, so people can give specific feedback to topics on there. If people want to write full letters and have more than a form can accommodate, they can email me directly. We will compile the state forms and the Planning Board form, the public comment forms, and bring them to the Planning Board together when we get the draft back from the state. The Planning Board can then review the comments and decide if they want to make changes. Again, at this point, we've done a lot of outreach. We don't see necessarily, again, we need a balance of a plan that represents the entire community. So, if Chip sends me an email, and he wants all these one-words change, it's probably not going to happen. If it's something that is an error, then we will fix it. But if it's something that we missed, and as long as it really reflects the community, then we would make those changes. Once the Planning Board takes those comments, decides on any changes, North Star will prep the final document. The Planning Board will go through their public process, which requires a full document and public hearing as available 30 days prior. The Planning Board will go through their process, make a recommendation to the Council. The Council will go through their multiple meeting process. If you adopt it, we will then send it to state, kind of the state as a courtesy, and at that point, it's, we're just informing them on the final plan, and it's more of a formality and a thank you. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Caroline. I'm thoroughly impressed at your command of that sequence. There's about 39 steps in there. So, I think I just heard that while we're going to send, and I would fully endorse this, send the plan to the state this Friday, for them to start digesting its compliance with state requirements, that we still have the ability to add in some public comment after we get it back from the state? Because we got a nice memo, Council got a nice memo on the 30th from FSAB about some suggested, let's say, I may be oversimplifying here, but some nuanced changes about text and, and particular focus areas that we might want to consider.
The Planning Board did get that, too, and they didn't make any changes as a result of that at the last meeting.
Okay. That's good to know. I wasn't sure that that had already been digested. So, should somebody pick this up and want to, they would have another opportunity to present that at the final public hearing, which is much later, the end of the summer?
Yes. We want to be pushing this out during the next two and a half months for people to review, because when we get to public hearing, we want to hit the ground running. I feel confident that we've offered ample opportunities, we've done a lot of mailers, so I hope the comments will be minimal, but we will still take the comments. And again, as long as we, the Planning Board feels like they reflect the values of the entire community.
Sure.
We will be, we'll be looking at them and considering.
And it certainly, at this stage, there's always likely, you give an opportunity for the public to comment, there'll be some segment of the general public that comes and comment, and at some point, we have to just kind of shut the door and get the thing approved and get it on, you know, get it out there working. So, I'm fully aware of that, and I just want to, if somebody has a really strong reaction, I just wanted to be able to say, you'll have a little bit of an opportunity to at least express that. It may not result in a change. It is significant, the amount of different dynamics that the consultant and the plan process take into account to get a very thorough document, and it's impressive.
Yeah, I think you just summed up great. I think, yes, you have the opportunity to comment, and then it's going to be up to the Planning Board to decide if further changes are warranted. If it's something like, hey, you got the name of that trail wrong, or you missed this, like, and it's not really substantive.
Right.
It will just be made. But if it's something that warrants discussion.
Yep.
The Planning Board will have the opportunity to review all of that.
All in favor of sending it out on Friday? That's great.
Other questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
I've seen many of my co-counselors at many of these events, so I think we've been fairly plugged in the entire time, so. None of this should be super revolutionary at this point.
Yeah, we do want to thank you. We've just been overwhelmed by the community participation and the Council. To have almost all of you at every meeting is just.
And some Council dogs, too.
Priceless. And dogs, yeah.
I was sitting next to Dan and went, Josie, last time.
I really feel like it's made a difference in the success of getting us to where we are today, and, you know, using an experienced consultant who's been familiar with Freeport has also been a great asset to Freeport. Good.
So, as one who is quick to let people know when I'm not happy with a product, I do just want to take a minute to express my appreciation for, of course, Caroline. She is amazing, and she has managed to stay on top of a really complicated project. But also, North Star, I think we've asked them to be pretzel-like at times and change their perspective midstream, and I think they've done a nice job of trying to meet our needs.
Yeah, I'm going to, since we're just giving shout-outs, I also want to give a shout-out to Kyle, because Kyle came very late in this process, and we have thrown him in, and he's been a silent partner, really, and done whatever we needed to, but he has been through all these documents and every single line of that implementation table with me. So, that's been really great to have another hand in the planning department that can help us with this.
I also want to thank the Planning Board. I mean, as you mentioned, how long they have been at work on this. They have been extremely diligent in working with North Star, working the public engagement process, and it's, it has been an enormous amount of information to digest and weigh and, and get this very balanced report. So, that's fantastic. The other thing I just want to comment on is the layout's fantastic, and the fact that you used so many of the photos from the 2024 Our Town project, I think is also great, which includes quite a number of young people, but people of diverse ages. And I think that that's, as a project that really worked hard to get a snapshot of Freeport in 2024, I think it's lovely to have that in the plan.
Yeah, that, I mean, Meeting House Arts has been a great partnership, and as they provided those to us, and they've hosted us, so we've been super thankful for that.
Any objections to signing it and getting it sent off? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of our agenda.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all right.